I'm going to call this Lacey City Council meeting on September 12th, 2019 to order. If possible, can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a published agenda that also shows us we're adjourning to a work session. Is there any additions? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda items?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Could we announce the purpose of this session after the meeting?
Yeah, the session after, the work session after the meeting is to discuss our regional housing council recommendations. And there will be an amendment to talk about another issue that Councilmember Stevan is bringing up as well, but we'll talk about that at the work session.
Thank you.
But given that, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any posts that motion carries. We have an agenda. And first up is public recognitions and presentations, a recognition of our park board youth representative. Jen?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, I wanted to recognize our park board youth commissioner, and I don't see her here, Kariana, but I'd still like to recognize her for her services past school year. So on behalf of the park board, her efforts were outstanding as serving as youth commissioner on the park board. The board and I found Kariana to be very dependable, patient, approachable, and cheerful to work with. She did a great job, so we wish to thank her for her contribution, and we look forward to seeing great things out of this young lady in the future.
Great.
Thank you.
I have a certificate of appreciation. We'll make sure she gets it.[163.81][163.81](Laughter).
Thank you.
So next up, we have a public comment on items not on the agenda. I'll make sure that's clear. We usually do not make comment on items on the agenda. And so is there anyone who wishes to address this council on any items that are not on the agenda? Turn. Did you sign up?
Yes, again.
Okay, Lauren?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. The Up-With-Down Syndrome group of South Puget Sound asked me to come out and shamelessly plug our buddy walk that's happening on October 5th. I think the dialogue went, "Who do we know that's shameless?" And my name came to mind immediately.[225.31][225.31](Laughter). So I am here with that duty. We have extended letters of invitation to the mayors, and I think a personal invitation actually went to the Lacey police chief as well. And it's October 5th from 9:00 to 11:00, and it is just a celebration to recognize the value that our citizens with Down Syndrome have to our communities and their contribution and their spirit. Typically, our folks with Down Syndrome don't ask for handouts. They sometimes have to ask for a hand up, but they want to participate. They want to be included. They want to contribute. And it is just a spirit. My daughter has taught me a tremendous amount in her 33 years on this earth. It's an amazing process. But we have had indications from the mayors of Tomwater and Olympia that they would like to participate. We just wouldn't want Lacey to be pointed out in any way, shape, or form if they weren't there, you know. I can't, I don't anticipate that there's any competition among the three cities, but I can't-
I've always made it.
Yeah. We really appreciate your support. We've traditionally had this at the Lacey Athletic Center out on Silicon and Meridian across from the Ostrom Plant, not for long, I understand. So I understand the Olympia and Tomwater Police are coordinating a static display and some things. And again, I'm sure there's no spirit of competition. I'm sure no one would point out if Lacey was not participating, but just a heads up. I appreciate very much anything that the council can do to prosper the Up-With-Down Syndrome group and our buddy walk. We are a 501(c)(3), so there's no danger of violating any kind of rules. And we are non-political, even in this season. We are non-political. And we have guaranteed, I was at the Tuesday Olympia City Council meeting, and I did offer the guarantee to the council there that there will be no open microphone at that event, too. So just to allay any fears. If you were there or saw it, you would know why I'm saying that tonight.
Can you give us the time again?
What's that?
Time and date?
9:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, October 5th. It is in recognition of National Down Syndrome Month, which is October. Any other questions?
Is that at the rack? Yes, still. It's at the rack?
The Regional Athletics Center at Meridian and Silicon. It's actually Fire Station, I think, 34?
Yep.
They've been gracious to us every year. This is our 12th year. This is the Capital Region Buddy Walk because we are the largest buddy walk south of Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you much. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items not on the agenda? Lisa?
Hi, I'm Lisa Gelati, and we are very excited to tell you about our mobile hygiene infrastructure fleet. We have a shower trailer that's 17 stalls, and it's a 53-foot shower trailer that's a regular semi. And it is a water truck for the gray water. So we come self-contained, so we can set up anywhere. And we're working on bringing support vehicle of our school bus, which first one will be washers and dryers and some storage and little, some toilets as well. And then the second bus will be more of a community support area where people can come and use computers, get connected with people and friends and family, and also bring in a whole bunch of other services in the area, service providers working together to bring services to the homeless instead of them wondering how to get clothing washed. I mean, can you imagine waking up in the morning and taking a shower just like you always do every day? Like, I don't think about it a lot of times. And, you know, what would it be like to roll out of bed and not really roll out of bed? You're just on the ground. And then you're already dirty and wet, and perhaps your clothing, you know, all the other bedding is wet. What are you going to do? It gets left. It gets thrown away because you can't wash it. What would I do? I mean, what would you all do? We're all human. We're all in this together, and I want to be part of the solution. So that's why we started this business, a nonprofit.
Thank you, Lisa, for all you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.[556.16][556.16](Applause).
Is there, that's good. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items not on the agenda, not on the agenda? Jack? Please keep your comments. About three minutes, Jack.
You betcha. All right. Boise Versus Martin says, "If there are homeless in a juridition, there must be enough shelters for all of them. Without an accurate and more often than once a year census, how can any jurisdiction know how much shelter is needed? Does our jurisdiction realize how much money is saved on making shelters by those who already know their shelters? Building a very nice lot for us is cheaper and faster than building a full shelter. Concerning the homeless in Lacey's jurisdiction, getting to know them is how you will solve this issue. Ignoring them is not. We are here, and we're becoming mainstream. There's almost as much of us as there is those of you living in houses if you had an accurate pit count, which you do not. There are homeless with nothing but what's in their packs. There are some who live in tents. There are some who live in vehicles. These three groups are further compounded by families, addicts, people with mental and emotional issues, and homeless who have served their time and are trying to survive. This is further compounded by those who can and want to work, those who can and don't want but should work, and those with physical or mental issues who can't work and seniors who should not have to work unless they choose to. Although them need to be dealt with differently, there is no one-size-fits-all. We are not a temporary issue. We are fast becoming mainstream America. The more expensive the housing you live in gets, the more of us there will be. I need a permanent place to park. I am not a temporary citizen of Lacey, so temporary parking is not an option. I have lived here for over 20 years, and I have not always been homeless. Again, I implore you and the planning commission to take what we have to say seriously. To discount us because of being poor or have a checkered past is a mistake that I can only prove to you by pointing out, all of you, to the New Testament. If you don't know who Paul is, let me suggest you spend some time getting to know him. A poor person with a checkered past still may provide value if the opportunity is provided. I ask that you talk to some of the homeless, get to know them, so you can understand exactly what they need. Thank you."
Thank you, Jack. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items not on the agenda? Please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Marcus Humbert. I'm here on behalf of the Shilter Farm Homeowners Association. We have recently had to file an appeal against the city. I've been advised from our legal counsel not to specifically address issues of that case. However, we were extremely concerned about the recent change in the amount of money required simply to file an appeal of the decisions. It is currently $2,179 just to have the city relook at an administrative opinion issued. I think for most people, most individuals, that is extremely prohibitive and would get to some serious issues of substantive due process and denial of such. And so also, on the fee schedule that was published July 1st, 2019, we were surprised to find not only the $2,179 fee, but also that it had also mentioned that hearing examiner fees were going to be required. Those fees were not specified. I called your office. My attorneys called your office. No one in your office was able to give us an answer as to what those fees were until finally they called us back and said, "We don't know where that came from. We don't know what those fees are. We don't know how that ended up on a published schedule for the city of Lacey, and you do not owe those." So I understand there's many people here that have issues greater than us, but, you know, when it comes to the ability to appeal to a body making administrative decisions that affect 142 homeowners in the city, I feel, you know, that the collective strength of my homeowners association may be able to afford $1,200, or $1,2,179 to file an appeal. An individual who may have an adverse decision made against them perhaps would not. And I am very concerned for people who would not have the financial resources to do such.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking to us. And I know this is, this specific question has come up, and I think the council will look into it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Is there any other people wishing to address the items not-
Is there any hearing relating to the RV parking?
No. Please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Larson. I live at 2610 Carpenter Road Northeast. I have a short, prepared statement regarding the Greg Cuyo Community Park at 2720 Carpenter Road Northeast. So if you allow me about two minutes, I will try to read through it quickly. We live directly across the road from this future park, which at present is undeveloped. We have lived here since 1946. I would just like to make a few brief comments about the possibility of this park becoming a temporary parking place for overnight RV parking and other types of vehicles.
Sir, that is not currently scheduled, and I'm not sure where you've heard that, but that's not going to happen, sir.
As reported in the Tuesday edition of the Olympian newspaper, if you'll just allow me another minute. The soil in this valley is predominantly clay soil. Although the ground is reasonably stable in the summer, for about six to eight months of the year during the rainy season, it becomes very slippery and will not hold up to vehicle traffic without putting down massive amounts of gravel. If you get off of a gravelled area during the rainy season, you will instantly get stuck. Therefore, the Greg Cuyo Park would probably only be usable during the dry summer months. Even in the summertime, we frequently get stuck with our tractors when mowing or baling hay and have to pull the tractors out with our bulldozer. Anything on tires will easily get stuck in this type of soil, and the only thing that will get them out is a bulldozer or something on tracks that will spread the weight out. Also, if the Greg Cuyo Park were to have gravel put on it to accommodate the overnight parking, it may be put in the wrong location, as the former parks director, Lori Flem, who later died, only had very preliminary plans for the park. So if gravel were put in an area that would later be a grass or lawn area, this could be a big problem. The speed limit on this portion of Carpenter Road Northeast is 50 miles per hour, and the cars frequently go much faster at 60 to 70 miles per hour. We had a fatality on this road about a mile north of us two years ago, where a young man aged 17, who had just graduated from high school that evening, got his car up to over 100 miles per hour before he went off the road and hit a stump, and the car rolled over multiple times and pinned him underneath, killing him instantly. Just last winter, a woman traveling south on Carpenter Road Northeast at a high rate of speed went off the road in our front yard and flipped her car over, landing on its top in our field with the car totally demolished. It could be a big problem for the RVs and cars to get into the Greg Cuyo Park safely without getting in a collision unless the county reduced the speed limit, which it refused to do about 20 years ago when I had everyone in this area sign a petition to get the speed lowered. The proposed location for this temporary overnight parking area on Main Street near Cabela's makes much more sense, as the area is on high ground and the street is already paved, but is not in use except for construction vehicles working-
Sir-
-on the new interchange on Marvin Road over I-5.
You reached your, we reached your three minutes.
Oh, I'm just about done. If the Main Street area was not large enough to accommodate all the vehicles, perhaps a parking area closer to Cabela's could also be used for overflow, as it is, it is apparently all owned by the Indians now. As a store employee told me recently that Cabela's sold their land and building to the Indians.
Sir, you reached your three minutes.
Yeah, and then did a leaseback, and their large parking lot on the western edge is already being used as a truck stop and RV parking area.
Out of respect for people that speak before and after you.
Okay, yeah. To locate the temporary overnight parking on the Greg Cuyo Park would be a huge mistake, could lead to many problems. Thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, our next item on the agenda is under proclamations. First one up is the Emergency Preparedness Month.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas in the Pacific Northwest, we face the threat of earthquakes, volcanic eruptions, weather events, floods, and human tragedies with unpredictable consequences, which can disrupt power, communications, and travel infrastructure, and-
Whereas first responders may not always be able to reach community members quickly in an emergency or disaster, and-
Whereas the Lacey community can take action to prepare, respond, and recover from any natural or human disaster, the more who are prepared, the safer we are and the faster our community will recover, and-
Whereas we encourage community members to attend local events to learn more about preparedness, such as the upcoming Thurston County Emergency Preparedness Expo on Saturday, September 28th, at the Peter G. Schmidt Elementary School in Tomwater, and-
Whereas we encourage the community to visit the federal emergency management agency's website, ready.org, to learn more about saving early for disaster costs, creating an emergency kit and evacuation plan, teaching youth about emergencies, and getting involved in your community's preparedness, and-
Whereas Lacey community members who are prepared to meet any emergency or disaster can be a positive influence on their neighbors by sharing their preparedness story and encouraging the participation of friends, family, and coworkers, and-
Now, therefore, I, Mayor Ryder, on the behalf of the Lacey City Council, proclaim September 2019 as Emergency Preparedness Month in the city of Lacey, and encourage all community members to prepare themselves, their families, and their neighbors for the consequences of an emergency. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, September 12th, 2019. Do we have someone who's picking up? Great. You have a few words, sir?
Under three minutes. First of all, Mayor Ryder, members of the council, thank you very much. My name is Justin Forder. First and foremost, and most importantly, I'm a member of the community, so I live just, I live just down off Carpenter Road. And then recently, today, I met with, I'm also, I work for FEMA at Camp Murray. Today I was with some of my colleagues, state and federal, working on private partner, private-public partnership. And so I really just want to thank you for your business. And so it's partnerships between the public and the private sector like that, they're going to help people within these disasters. And I'd be remiss if I wouldn't ask everybody to just take a quick second and remember what you felt like on 9/12. Remember how you felt on 9/12? That's one thing I just want to point to, and then thanks to all the first responders within the community. Everybody here is an emergency manager, whether or not you have to find that alternative route to take your kid to school, or you have those extra batteries laid aside to have your flashlights powered. Really, this is just about being disaster literate. That's really all it is, just knowing the threats and hazards in your area, and then just taking those little extra steps monthly or weekly, you know, putting a couple extra double or triple As aside, you know, talking to your family, making a plan, making a place to meet up in case you can't get to each other, sharing phone numbers with your colleagues, stuff like that. You know, and then lastly, thanks for pointing the attention to ready.gov. You know, we don't have hurricanes in this area, but, you know, we do have our fair share of threats and hazards, and so just being prepared with that. Four themes for National Preparedness Month, which is the federal national preparedness initiative. Make a budget. You know, if it's $5 a week, then, you know, if it's $2 a week, if it's $1 a week, if it's, you know, you leave the soda and, you know, you just put that money in a penny jar or something, you know, that's something you can do. Make a plan, get involved. Talk to your youth also, because, you know, as we leave office and we, you know, and we get older, we're going to need to rely on the youth to carry preparedness forward. And then lastly, again, I just wanted to thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for your quick response. You emailed me right away within like a whole day, and that just really says the quality of the mayor and then the rest of the leadership that we have in the city of Lacey. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do. Next up under proclamations is the Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month celebrates the Hispanic and Latino community and highlights its countless achievements, and whereas the observation began in 1968 as Hispanics Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was enacted into federal law on August 17th, 1988, calling upon all people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs, and-
Whereas many Latino Americans trace their roots to the cultures of the indigenous peoples of the Americas, including the Arawaks, the Aztecs, the Incas, the Mayas, the Taínos. Some trace their roots to the Spanish explorers or to the Africans who were brought as slaves to the New World, and-
Whereas September 15th through October 15th is recognized as National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is a time to honor the invaluable ways Hispanics and Latinos contribute to our common goals, celebrate their diverse cultures, and to work towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all, and-
Whereas this month's theme, "A History of Serving Our Nation," Hispanics and Latinos have and continue to serve as civil rights leaders, politicians, military service members, educators, first responders, science pioneers, and public servants for our country, and-
Whereas Hispanics have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country, and-
Whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of the city of Lacey, we honor the invaluable ways they contribute to our great city, and-
Now, therefore, I, Mayor Ryder, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2019, as National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in the city of Lacey, and encourage our community to join us in the celebration, celebrating this great contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans in our city, state, and nation. Signed, myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, September 12th, 2019. I think we have someone to come. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council. Appreciate you guys. Appreciate you all having us here today. And just want to introduce myself. My name's Tony Gallegos. I am a commissioner with the Commission on Hispanic Affairs, appointed by Governor Inslee, August 2018, on a two-year term, and 30-year resident, city of Lacey. Got a great Latino-Hispanic community here. And I just want to say thank you for, you know, having the compassion that you have as a city leadership and welcoming, you know, the Hispanic and Latino community with open arms. So on behalf of the commission and my fellow Latinos here, other residents of the city of Lacey, I just want to say thank you very much for this and for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, buddy.[1697.42][1697.42](Applause).
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
We left out coaches also a part of that resume, because Coach Tony has taught multi-generations of our youth of football, baseball, and multiple other things, and just teaching them how to be great people and grow up to be contributing members of society. Thanks, Coach.
Thanks, Coach. Thanks for what you do. So, next up on our agenda is a referral from our hearings examiner for Project 18-339, the Woodland Meadows PRD. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
I want to thank the staff because it loaded very well this time. Thank you very much.
Yes, 875 pages, yeah.
Thank you.
I promised Commander Upton I was going to read all of it verbatim, so, but I won't.
I skimmed.
Okay, we memorized it.
I skimmed.
All right. Well, good evening. Tonight, I am here with a recommendation from the hearing examiner for approval of a planned residential development, a site plan review application, a preliminary subdivision, a wetland development permit, and a Class 4 Forest Practice application. So the project, oops, it didn't come up. Oops. Give us just a minute here. a minute here. It's a lot easier if that's...
Maybe we can get staff to act it out?
To act it out. Ooh, that puts my improv skills to a test.
And the projector's not all the way down either, so I wonder if it's...
It's not that.
We could try fixing this and then come back to you.
Don't you love technology?
Don't you, though?
Yeah, because the screen didn't come down all the way.
Right, it didn't.
That's what I was thinking. Is it imperative that we see what's on the screen?
It's not imperative. It's helpful, but it doesn't, if you've, I mean, the council certainly has their exhibits in front of them, so I'll leave that up to your guys' prerogative there.
Can we start asking you questions while they're writing?
We need to go through the presentation first. Well, let's see, let's go ahead and start, and then if they can get to work, we'll come back and go through some of the slides.
Absolutely, that's totally fine. So, the project is composed of three parcels that are located on the south side of 15th Avenue Northeast. It's just north and west of I-5, as I-5 kind of takes a jog in that location. As you know, 15th Avenue Northeast is a boundary between the City of Lacey and Thurston County. In fact, 15th Avenue Northeast is a Thurston County road and not a City of Lacey street. There are residential properties to the north located in Thurston County. Directly across from the proposed access for this project is the Woodland Creek subdivision. Around that are some other large, larger and moderate-sized, relatively undeveloped pieces of residentially-zoned property. Just west of this property is the Century Place subdivision that was developed back in the 90s. To the east is a largely undeveloped property with one existing single, older single-family home. And in the southwest corner of the property, actually, just a portion of it touches the St. Placid priority property. Otherwise, it's bounded on the south by Interstate 5. The property itself is a little over 26 acres. It includes two wetlands, a 10,000-square-foot Category 4 wetland on the eastern parcel, and approximately 32,000 square feet of a Category 3 wetland that continues off-site and onto the priory property to the southwest. The applicant is proposing to develop a 14-building, 360-unit multifamily apartment complex and a 23-lot, single-family subdivision, including a clubhouse and a rec building, low-intensity walking trails, and several play areas and open space amenities. The project is using the Planned Residential Development PRD designation, and what that designation does is it's kind of like an overlay zone in the sense that we still use the underlying, oh, hey, look at that. Didn't I give a good description of where it was at? So, yes, it's these three parcels right here. And I'm going to...
And St. Placid is just to the south, right?
What was that? Yeah, St. Placid is...
Yeah, right there.
That's St. Placid. Hey, Donna, can you advance one for me? Maybe? Maybe that was too much to ask. Okay. Anyways, so it's using a PRD designation, and what the PRD designation does is, oh, perfect, that's the zoning map. I'll get to that in just a second. It incentivizes basically developers to preserve more natural characteristics of the land and encourage a mix of housing types rather than just one housing type throughout. And what it does is it allows this and encourages this by providing flexibility. Basically, the PRD overlay allows potential flexibility in building heights, lot size, design standards of the community itself, and density bonuses in exchange for greater open space set-asides, 30% for PRDs versus 20% for multifamily, and 10% for your typical single-family subdivision, and also in exchange for more thoughtful design standards. This project, it isn't using density bonuses, it's staying within the density allowances of our zoning code, but rather, what it does is it's shifting the density around. As you'll notice from the zoning map I've got here, we've got a moderately, a moderate-density zone parcel on the west, next to Century Court, the existing single-family, low-density 0 to 4 residential in the middle, and then a split-zone property on the east, which is moderate-density and high-density residential. And so, in discussions with the applicant early on, it was determined that, one, to make a more thoughtful design to shift the density, the low-density from the middle, over to the west side adjacent to the existing single-family and cluster the high-density development on the other side. And what that does, too, is it also allows us to spread the density out over a larger area rather than creating really high-density development in order for the developer to make his density quotas on the two outer parcels. And so, the overall density of the entire project, when it's all said and done, is about 15 units to the acre, so that's just under what we, what's about what we allow in our moderate-density zoning district. No impacts are proposed to the wetlands themselves. There are walking trails that are proposed within the buffers of both wetlands. And then underground stormwater vaults are proposed in the outer 25% of, I believe it's Wetland A's buffer, which is going to be temporary sort of above-ground and obviously will be required to be restored, have a buffer restoration plan. The project is paying traffic mitigation fees to both the city and Thurston County, and will be required to address concurrency requirements at Carpenter Road and Britton Parkway. The project does have two vehicular passenger vehicle access points on 15th Avenue, and then this single-family portion, oh, it worked that time, off of Century Court. There is an, the access itself from Century Court hasn't been built yet, but it's there, the right-of-way is there, so the developer will be required to improve that. So, it was always planned to have a connection into that development. As you'll note in the record, there was some initial disagreement between the city and the applicant regarding the required queuing distance between the gate and 15th Avenue Northeast, but ultimately, both parties have came to an agreement, which is detailed in Exhibit 46 of your packets. Public hearing was held on April 2nd with several members of the public in attendance, provided testimony on impacts to wildlife, utilities, but a large majority of the comments were about traffic on 15th Avenue. The hearings examiner is recommending approval of the PRD SPR Wetland Development Preliminary Subdivision and Class IV Forest Practice Application with conditions of approval substantially as recommended by staff. Staff requests that council approve the application subject to these conditions, findings of facts, and conclusions of law, as specified in the recommendation dated April 30th. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I would move to approve Project 18-339, Planned Residential Development Preliminary Subdivision Wetland Development Permit, Site Plan Review and Land Clearing Class IV Forest Practices Permit for Woodland Meadows.
You did it.
It's been moved and seconded.
Easy for you to say.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor.
So, on, part of it says that for the wetland buffer and preparation stuff, there will be some monitoring provided, and that was on, gosh, what page was it on? On, I think on page 10 of the, of 46 of the first 46 pages. And it says, "A five-year monitoring program will be instituted to ensure the successive improvements to the wetland buffers." And I was curious, who does the monitoring? Is that staff?
It's done by the applicant, the applicant's wetland biologist.
And then they report back to you?
Correct.
Okay. And then, the other thing of the forest practice, it's a forest practice...
Forest practice, Class IV Forest Practice Application.
So, will they be required, and even though I read this as best I could, under the circumstances, will some of the additional trees that are cut down need to be planted in other areas? Or how are they handling the tree removal?
Yeah, so, and this is typical with most of our projects. So, what they'll do is, prior to us issuing the grading permit, we'll send one of our city's contract foresters out, and they'll walk the site and do more thorough analysis. You probably saw in here there was an initial, a preliminary sort of analysis by the forester. They'll go out once we have a final site plan and walk the site and identify trees based on the site plan that might be able to, that can be incorporated into the site plan itself. And then also, and projects like this where we are taking down, you know, stands of trees that have been there for a while, they'll look at potential edge trees that'll be hazards once all those other trees are taken down. So, it's a pretty, so the forester goes out, like I said, prior to that issuance of that grading permit, and will do a walk of the site and identify those trees for saving. The site also is required, like pretty much all of our sites, as you know, to have a 5% tree tract or tree tracks. So, we'll also identify the areas where those might be able to be located.
So, then one last question. The multifamily development, none of that is affordable housing, or is some of it required to be affordable housing?
None of it's required to be affordable housing. That did come up at the hearing, and the applicant's representative mentioned that none of it is, you know, affordable per se, in terms of any requirement or anything like that. But they've got a variety of, what they are including is actually a product I don't think we've seen yet in this, in the city, or that they're potentially, which is these kind of above, like basically tiny little studios above some of the garages that are going to be, are much smaller. And so, they're going to have a kind of a wider price point than you might see in your typical apartment complex.
Okay, okay, good.
And also, can I clarify one? Dave made a good point. I think I referenced the wrong hearings examiner's recommendation, the April, I said April 30th, and it was August 16th, I believe. So, just to clarify that for the record.
Councilmember?
Could you unpack the city's position on traffic? There's, some of the concerns were about traffic. What is the city, what's our statement on that?
Well, we're collecting, obviously, we're collecting, well, first of all, we say the applicant was required to do a traffic impact analysis, so they did that. And so, we'll be collecting traffic impact fees for city projects that, you know, send trips through identified city projects. Additionally, kind of went over it really quickly, but we did find, the TIA did find that with this project, that this project will trip concurrency at Carpenter Road and Britton Parkway. And so, they've basically got three options. They can build it themselves, build the ultimate fix, which I believe is a roundabout, or they can pay, they can come up with sort of like an interim fix to fix a problem, or they can pay a fee, which I think was identified as $75,000 to pay that. So, they've got three options, and they'll have to take care of that prior to building permit issuance. And then, the county, we, as part of the SEPA review, we routed the project to the county, and the county is going to be collecting fees for their projects as well, including 15th Avenue Northeast. And I think anybody who's traveled 15th Avenue Northeast knows that that is gotten so busy with all of the development that's occurred up in the northeast area, and people using that as an alternate ways to get around town. But fortunately or unfortunately, that is a county project, and the city doesn't have a lot of direct impact over when that gets built. But they've been collecting, the county's been collecting on that for a while now, so, and they're continuing, excuse me, continuing to do so.
Follow-up, I think?
Sure.
What discussions happened here about public transportation, if any? Or is that a separate?
Well, it's not really, I mean, it is. We route the projects to inner-city transit. They get all of our, you know, all of our routings. And I don't believe we received any comments from inner-city transit specifically on this project, so.
I believe there was, and that they were approving it, and with ADA standards in place, and the routing in place, what I read.
I have some additional things I'd like to add to the discussion, please.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I have some concerns about the project. This is a sizable, mostly market-rate, multifamily rental project. This community is crying out for affordable housing. We know affordable housing options are a substantial part of the solution to preventing homelessness. Additionally, it's my desire for the people of Lacey to build individual wealth, as well as grow as a community in a prosperous and healthy way. Increasing the amount of market-rate rental units does not lend to that vision. Furthermore, I would like to see the city find ways to incentivize our amazing local builders and developers to build the right-size housing for the benefit of the people of our city. I'd like to recommend time to table this project and request an amendment to the recommendation to include additional affordable housing options to what you mentioned earlier.
Councilmember?
And I would just add to the discussion here. I think this is good. You know, anything that brings more housing helps with our affordable housing situation. More housing is the answer to affordable housing. It's a supply issue. This brings considerable additional supply, so I think this is a great project.
Yeah, there's been a lot of work. I think the questions about affordable housing, and I appreciate your concern, Councilmember, is a discussion that we need to talk about future development. This has already gone through the process, and they've developed it to our current standards. To change the standards at this point, I think, would be very unfair. And so, I would be against tabling this, because we would have to have cause to do it, and I don't think, we don't have cause. So, I don't think that's even an option. I think my question is, is that it seems like the big concern around this has been some of that on the entrances, and especially coming after 15th. I understand we know how busy that is. And so, the idea was that you're going to bring the gate in farther, so allow some stacking, then you could also allow, you know, some multiple cars come through. What I didn't understand is, will there be a gate off of the other access point?
There will be a gate off of the other access point as well. However, that is off a different standard of road. I think our transportation was particularly concerned with the gate on 15th, because that's an arterial, and the speed's on that. So, that's where, you know, when you've got cars going faster in a larger road, there's more concern about, you know, potential conflicts with turning and stacking and whatnot. When you're coming off of, I believe this is, I believe that is just a minor local, it's our smallest, basically, you know, street standard. So, there wasn't the same type of concern for conflict.
Yeah, that's, it's going to add a lot of traffic to that neighborhood, because I imagine a lot of people would rather go through that gate than try to go through 15th, since it's so busy. Did the county give you any idea of when 15th is going to be improved?
I, no. I've asked that question, and I, yeah, no, I don't have any, unfortunately, any answers on that. I don't know if Scott does, but...
It's on our CIP, but there's, you know, no funding behind it. So, yeah, there's not a timetable. What's that?
They're collecting fees, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
Is there any?
I have several things that I really liked about this project. The first is, you had a cul-de-sac that just was, went, just fed into the cul-de-sac. So, this connects into the future development, so there's an alternative route to get out in case of emergency. Frontage improvements, the, how the parcels were flip-flopped to make better sense to accommodate for the multi-housing, which is great. Inventory, any kind of inventory, when you have less than 3%, only helps housing in general, and eases the pressure on, you know, the rising cost of rents and such. There's something else, oh, neighboring parcel. There's a parcel to the east that had like 20-something cars and just, I don't know what the situation is, but that property owner, whoever it is, has taken measures to make their property more presentable.
That's actually, that, I'm pretty sure the piece you're talking about is actually the easternmost piece of this property. So, yeah.
I thought it was right, right on the property line on the other side. But this is part of that?
Yep, it's part of that, so.
But I mean, so that neighbor next door can see the value in that also. And so, it's, there's a lot of great things about this project. It's probably been a long time coming, which is also, it's just been sitting idle for a while, waiting for connectivity and future investment from, so it's, there's a lot of things to be pleased about with this.
And actually, that, thank you, that reminded me of something. This project is building a lift station, a sewer lift station in this area, which has been on a lot of people who own property up there, their wish list for a long time. Serving that area with sewer has been a challenge for a long time.
With the lift station and the frontage road improvements, the infrastructure is great, you know. We have aging infrastructure nationwide, not just here. I think Washington's doing a decent job, but this is just, you know, great things come from projects like that.
Is there any other, Jason?
I'm intrigued by the small studios that you mentioned. Do you have a ballpark idea about how many of those units are going in?
I don't, unfortunately. I don't think... I don't think it's, because they're just, they've been proposed, that if those go in, that they'll go in over some of the garages in the parking lot. So it's kind of hard, it's sort of hard to say at this point, once we kind of have to nail that final layout down, so.
The last thing I want to point out about is the, it's like where I live, Hawks Prairie Community Association, where you have homes that are like first-time homeowner houses, multifamily, and then you have single-family. It's, you know, mixed use is great. It's, you don't want to have all your marbles in one jar. Councilmember.
I would hope that you'd perhaps have more information about that diversification of housing. Is this for first-time homebuyers, and those people who are in single-family homes, and those people who need small spaces? My main question to you is, is what percentage of AMI is this market-rate housing?
I honestly don't have that information. That's kind of one of the things that's driven more by the private sector, so that's...
I think the developer has a lot to do with that, too, don't they?
The developer, yo, that's what I'm saying, the developer does, yeah, yeah. When we're reviewing it for compliance with city codes and ordinances, you know, that's essentially what our project-level review is.
Are there any other questions? See if I can get back to the original motion.
Please don't make me repeat it.
I know.
Oh, come on.
Oh, come on.
Do you know what the timeline is for starting or completing the project?
I do not, I do not. They still have to go through their permitting process.
So it's 360 units. The proposal is a 360 multifamily, 23-lot, single-family.
Does that...
So the multifamily way far outweighs the... Deputy Mayor.
Does that include, that, what you just quoted, include potential studios above the garage, or does that...
I believe it does, I believe it does, yeah.
Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve Project 18-339, the planned residential development, the preliminary subdivision, the wetland development permit, the site plan review, and land clearing slash class five, four, forest practices permit for Willand Meadows. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is resolutions, Resolution 1078 relating to the House Bill 1406, City Manager.
Mayor and City Council, before you is a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Lacey to adopt legislation authorizing the sales and use tax for affordable and supportive housing in accordance with Substitute House Bill 1406. You may recall, this session in 2019, the Washington State Legislature authorized the diversion of sales tax from the 6.5% that the state collects, and allows access to that for cities as well as counties for affordable housing projects. That money could be used for acquisition, construction, rehabilitation, affordable housing, or also facilities providing supportive housing, as well as the operations and maintenance for those affordable or supportive housing projects. The rate that the city could collect if they pass a resolution is .0073%. That would be roughly just under $92,000 annually for the next 20 years from the city. I do want to reiterate, though, this is not a new tax. This is a reallocation from tax already collected from the state, and the state is now allowing the cities or counties, if they pass authorizing legislation, to access that. So this is a two-step process. First, you have to pass a resolution declaring the intent, and that needs to be followed up with an ordinance. This item was reviewed by the Finance and Economic Development Committee on August 27th, and recommended approval to the full council. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 1078 declaring the intent of the city of Lacey to adopt legislation authorizing sales and use tax for affordable and supportive housing in accordance with SHB 1406.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Deputy Mayor.
So does that include to approve the resolution, that statement, or does that need to be included? Because it seems like there's two steps.
Yeah.
The motion's appropriate to approve the resolution before council today. The second step would be down the road, when an ordinance was considered.
Okay. Yeah, discussion. Councilmember.
So I believe I was reading it, that these funds that we're designating would redirect funds that are normally spent. Could we speak to what those funds will be redirected from? In other words, what's the down?
Right, so right now, Washington residents are charged 6.5% at the cashier, and that 6.5% that the state collects, they're willing to give .0073% if the cities or counties pass the required legislation to divert that portion from the 6.5%. And for the city of Lacey, that totals just under $92,000.
So it comes from the state general fund?
Yeah, state's general.
Fund.
Comes from the state's portion of the sales and use tax.
Thank you. Councilmember. So what would, if passed by the county and the other municipalities, what would their dollars be annually? Thurston County, Olympia, Tom Water?
I believe the estimate is closer to $700,000 to $800,000 annually.
Total?
Yeah, everybody? Yeah. And there is discussions at a regional level, is it possible to work in partnership collectively as the cities and the county to actually provide more impact with those dollars collected?
Obviously, I think this is a no-brainer, the states collecting this. If we can divert a part of that and put it towards, you know, affordable housing or supportive housing, considering the crisis we're in, I think it makes a lot of sense. The one question I've never, I think I've had answered, that just under $92,000, is that set for 20 years, or is it based on the state's or the city's portion of the sales tax for the next, you know, every year? So could that adjust?
It could adjust, but that's our estimate, and Department of Revenue, once we fix the legislation, they determine what that's going to be for the next 20 years. So it could be fixed, it could adjust. I'm not quite sure on that question. It's a good question.
So you don't know if it's going to be adjusted every year?
No.
Or if it's going to be fixed based on last...
I believe it's based on the 2019 fiscal year. But we'll clarify it with the ordinance before it comes to council.
Because you would think, you know, if our sales tax increased, where we had a big, you know, finally Gateway was built, and we got the retail that we've all been dreaming of, that number would change dramatically. Or if a car dealership or something else moved in, so.
Sure.
Okay, is there, councilmember?
Yeah, I just want to give kudos to the state legislature for regifting existing tax, not raising tax, and then putting it in for the local use. I think that's wise. I appreciate that, and kudos to the state legislature.
This was one of those issues that several, several of us were very supportive during the process, and we're, you know, we've been sort of begging the state for more tools to handle this crisis that we're in. Cities cannot do it alone. I think what I really like about this as well is, it really encourages the entire county to work together to help on this issue. Obviously, this portion of it is not a lot of money, but if we can combine it with Olympia, Tom Water, the rest of Thurston County, and, you know, personally, if we could start putting it towards, you know, purchasing land and building affordable housing, you know, hopefully we can finally change the trajectory that we've been going in for such a long time, which is unaffordable housing, which I understand, councilmember, you're concerned with. But we need more tools to be able to handle this. The city of Lacey cannot do it alone. It's all hands on deck, and so this is a nice little step. It's not going to fix, I think, the issue long run, but any help is much appreciated. So, any other, councilmember?
I'm just, I want to say I'm fully in favor of this, and I hope that we, the next step we take will be working with the county toward a interlocal agreement, so that we can do these projects together. However, attorney, I hope that this will be an agreement that will be revisited from time to time as conditions change, and we have some flexibility built into that.
Yeah, I think the first step is passing the resolution, and the next is sort of working on the ordinance, and that, definitely, an interlocal agreement, so. So it's been moved and seconded to approve this resolution declaring the intent of the city of Lacey to adopt this legislation. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Next up, under ordinances, the ordinance 1551 related to parking. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Before you tonight, a proposed ordinance contemplating changes to the city's parking ordinance, which is codified in Lacey Municipal Code, Title 10, Chapter 14. So as councils are aware, increasingly, there's been an increase in persons parking commercial and/or recreational vehicles in areas of the city that are not designated for such parking, nor designed or intended for such vehicles to be parked. And the allowance of parking these types of vehicles for an extended period of time has caused some impacts on businesses, city hall operations, employee parking, in addition to some others. The city has no regulation of any kind on the books for parking in publicly-owned parking lots. Furthermore, there is very limited regulation of any kind in the code, Lacey Municipal Code, regulating parking just in general. And so there are some recommendations to amend this chapter. I will briefly walk through the proposed changes. I'll note that the ordinance before you has some subtle shift. There's no, there's no, the intent of the ordinance hasn't changed from what was included in your packet. However, I reworded Section 2, subsection B, and I'll walk through that with you very briefly. But at the beginning of the top of the ordinance, you'll just see that Section 1, currently the Director of Public Works with the police chief have authority to erect no parking signs. They have the authority currently to designate areas as no parking. What this amended change does is allows those two individuals the authority to limit times for parking, rather than just prohibiting it. And furthermore, to have that be applicable to parking lots, in addition, publicly-owned parking lots, in addition to public right-of-ways, et cetera. Section 2 is broken down into two sections. A deals with commercial vehicles, B deals with recreational vehicles. In both of those subsections, publicly-owned parking lots are added as areas where there are limitations for parking those sorts of vehicles. Specifically to recreational vehicles, the limitation, well, for both, commercial vehicles and recreational vehicles, the limitation is for four hours, but there are some exceptions to that. Exceptions would be for temporarily loading and unloading the vehicle. And then another exception for recreational vehicles would be whether a permit had been issued pursuant to this chapter, and with that permit affixed to the front window. Now, Section 4, City Manager Authorization, is a section that designates the city manager as having authority pursuant to procedures and policies that would need to be implemented to permit vehicles, recreational or commercial, to park in excess of these time periods. And if such designation was made, or whatever the policy was, the permit would have to be affixed to the vehicle in order to extend that time period. Further amendments here are as were included in the council packet. So, again, the changes in the reason there's an ordinance before you in paper form is simply there was some reorganization of that subsection B. It's a little clearer. At any rate, staff is recommending that you adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 10.14 of the Lacey Municipal Code related to parking. I'd certainly be willing to answer any questions council might have.
I would move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 10.14 of the Lacey Municipal Code relating to parking.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Councilmember.
I would venture to say that this will have a significant impact on our residents of Lacey who have recreational vehicles, that they're parking in their yards, perhaps, and plugging into their homes, and also RVs on the side of the street.
Well, it certainly would, I didn't mean to cut you off.
And also in front of their home on city.
So currently, a recreational vehicle can be parked for up to 24 hours, no questions asked. And so this does reduce that amount. Any vehicle that was parked on private property would not be addressed by this ordinance. This is only limited to public property and public parking lots, right-of-ways, et cetera. What's new in this, and what would be a change, and what would be a significant impact, certainly for anybody wanting to park an RV in those public areas for more than the four-hour period, would be the requirement that they obtain a permit in order to do so. And that is not codified, that would be pursuant to policy. So the city manager would have the discretion to develop those policies once implemented. And certainly, parking a recreational vehicle, say, mom's visiting from Florida or something, a policy would need to be implemented for that, such purpose. Additionally, we have concerns, well, there's clear concerns, another one would be at the rack, for example. A lot of RVs want to park at the rack, and that would have to be pursuant to policy. The vehicles that are parked at city hall presently, for them to be able to park anywhere for a period over four hours would have to be pursuant to a policy, and they'd have to have a permit.
Is that, and that policy isn't in place, is that policy can come before us for review, or is it completely up to the city manager?
Not pursuant to this ordinance, no. So this, basically, what the council would be doing pursuant to this ordinance would be designating the authority to develop those policies that I'm discussing to the city manager, as the executive of the city, and the administrative officer of the city, to implement those policies. And they could be amended and adjusted at city manager discretion, or designate, without the need to amend the ordinance again.
So a quick question.
Deputy Mayor.
So if there is no policy in place right now, but we pass the ordinance, how do we handle the gap?
Well, there wouldn't be, well, any gap. Again, the ordinance restricts and regulates parking on publicly-owned parking lots and right-of-way, and it limits it to four hours. And that's what the ordinance does.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be a gap.
So they wouldn't have a, be able to get a permit until the policy is developed?
Correct, that's right.
So, so would that, without a policy in place, how do you enforce this?
So the city is authorized to regulate public right-of-way and its own parking lots. I mean, that's a, that's a power that the city has.
Councilmember. Yeah, I just wanted to bring to light, I mentioned infrastructure and failing infrastructure earlier in this meeting. A lot of my concerns, too, are maintenance and protection of our infrastructures. A lot of these streets that commercial and recreational vehicles are parked on aren't built to hold these weights, and many of these vehicles are over 10,000 pounds. Not all our roads are built like Hogan Bay for truck traffic and multi-axle vehicles that, you know, so we have a responsibility to the taxpayer and are taking care of our infrastructure, and make sure that limited times and vehicles are limited to the streets that they, that those roads are built for. So that's just something I wanted to bring to light in this conversation.
Can I just add one point? Go ahead.
I have a question about how this ordinance, how this moves through jurisdictional lines. What are, how will this work in tandem with other jurisdictions? Or will it...
Well, presently, Olympia doesn't allow parking motor vehicles more than, I don't want to quote it. I know it's by permit only. I know it can't be overnight. Tom Water, I mean, that's obviously the one that we share the biggest common border with. Tom Water, I can't recite specifically what they have by way of RV. So I don't know that it would create any distinct difference between Lacey from the neighboring jurisdictions.
I'm prepared to vote for the parking ordinance, but I just want to point out that we're, we are taking a series of actions. Parking, camping ban, the RV parking area that's being contemplated. And you put those three together, and it gives the appearance that we're just really trying to put the squeeze on the homeless. Now, I know that's not the intention of our police chief, but I think we need to be really careful in how we develop the policy on that, and to have... careful in how we develop the policy on that and to have a very even-handed approach. I just, I know that we have a responsibility to keep the city safe for everybody, but I also feel very strongly that we don't want to harass homeless people and they need to be treated with respect and dignity. Thank you.
Counselor.
So, yeah, because this is a very selective ordinance, it's on parking for X amount of hours, you know, you cannot discuss the nexus about what do we do if we need to have some, you know, provide for overnight places and stuff, because this is pretty singular, so you can't talk about our next plans. And that's, that's an unfortunate thing that you can't discuss the nexus of how we're providing, going to try and provide for the homeless.
Well, I, I don't know that we can't discuss it. I mean, obviously, the proposed ordinance contemplates, or and if passed, would grant the city manager authority to look into and to allow and to permit parking in excess of those hours. And with that is an awareness of the current issue affecting city hall. Now, you're correct in that this ordinance specifically addresses parking and that's all it does. But the impact of this is clearly going to affect those that are parking at city hall due in large part because they don't have a home. I mean, that's been readily apparent to the city. And it would be fair to say that ideas have been tossed back and forth about what does that mean? You know, how, how, how can enforcement of this or what, what would a potential policy to address persons that might be parking at city hall due to homelessness, what would that look like? None of that's in place, you know, but that's certainly, you know, the eyes are down the road on how to implement those policies and what they might look like.
So if we can give out permits, and can we give out permits after we pass this or do we have to have the policy in place?
Correct. Well, this ordinance isn't going to be effective for five days.
Okay.
So it's not even law for five days.
So it's.
Once it is, once it is, then it could be enforced.
Okay, so can we get a policy out within five days so that we can make sure we have a permit if it needs to be extended longer?
Well, I, I would defer to the city manager on that, he'll be the one implementing the policy. I'll just, I'll just note, there's a distinction, you know, the limitations placed on jurisdictions via Boise v. Martin are inapplicable to enforcing a parking ordinance. That's regulating the city-owned property, okay? That's not criminalizing homelessness or anything of the sort. But that doesn't mean that the city can't take in a compassionate look towards other ordinances that are not affected by Boise v. Martin and apply some of the, the court's, you know, concerns and considerations from that case to other areas of the city, including a parking ordinance.
Okay.
So, obviously, this ordinance puts a, a lot of onus on our city manager to come up with policies and procedures to, to look at the exceptions to this parking ordinance is basically what we're doing. I would suggest that the city manager at least update this council at a future work session on what those policies, policies and procedures are going to be. Is that fair enough?
Great.
Yeah.
Well, and council can rescind this ordinance at its pleasure. I mean, this, right, I mean, if, if the policies and procedures are not what the council wants, I mean.
That's, that's why, that's why it's important to see those policies and procedures. Is there any other discussion? Counselor.
Just for the record, you know, we've discussed this too at work session and it was interesting to learn that the city didn't have a ordinance specific, this specific to parking. And so we should, and I'm glad we're putting this together.
Is there any other discussion? Counselor.
Just one last thought on this. I, I know that Chief Simcoe was in favor of this and this is another, another tool for him. But again, to Dave, unless there's another place that we can send, for example, the, the vehicles parked in our city hall parking lot, they get to stay there, don't they, until there is another place to send them?
No, the city can enforce parking regulations regardless of who the occupant of the vehicle is.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none? It's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance amending chapter ten dot fourteen of the Lacey municipal code relating to parking. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That motion carries. Next up.
Are illegal and according to the constitution of the United States are out of compliance.
Uh, next up.
Against your causeless people.
Next up on our report, on our agenda is the mayor's report and I have one.
We are going to be filing lawsuits against you and for your unconstitutionality. We do not appreciate this. Thank you so much.
The call, the order.
I don't care anymore. This is not correct. And the fact that you would not let people speak about their and voice their opinions on this situation, and the fact that you already wanted to vote against this.
Yeah.
You are out of compliance. You are unconstitutional home and the voice and the voicing versus Idaho.
We have a meeting to conduct.
You cannot do this. You are illegal. It's against the law.
Joe, can you please escort her out?
Oh, thanks a lot. I, you really want me to go that direction? Fine, I'm going to stand this way. Voicing versus Idaho says very clearly, page twenty. I do not appreciate this. You now harm the people. Thank you and have a great day.
Next up on our agenda is the mayor's report. I have one recommendation.
Mayor, can we have a five-minute recess? I make a motion to recess for five minutes.
We'll go forward. So I have one recommendation on, under the mayor's report. It's a recommendation to appoint David Black to the historic commission. David is here? You want, could you please come up and introduce yourself to this council? It's usually not this exciting at our council meetings.
Hello, my name is David Black. I live on Fifteenth Avenue Southeast. I'm a registered architect, mostly, mostly retired. I'm still doing some consulting with museums. I have undergraduate degrees in art and architectural history and graduate degrees in historic preservation and architecture and about forty years of experience in historic preservation as an architectural historian, preservation planner and a historical architect.
So I would move that we appoint David Black to the historic commission.
Second.
It's been moving seconded. David.
You get like six seconds.
We actually had two just amazing applicants this time for the historic commission and both very passionate about our history. David, obviously, considering we're in the process of trying to develop our museum and this is what you, what you're, you do, obviously, I don't think I've ever interviewed someone more qualified to be on the historic commission. So we really appreciate your, you, you know, dedicating your, your time to, to the city of Lacey and to our history and I really look forward to working with you and, and over the, over your first term.
I would, I'd be, I would love to hear more about your vision, about what you see from your service on this in the future.
Well.
Even though you're focused on the past.
It's going to be, it's going to be a learning experience for me because I've only been here about nine months, but I have a lot of experience in, in learning about different areas, history very quickly and understanding, you know, how the place has developed over time and what the resources are, evaluating those resources and, and promoting the protection of them, of the history. And I know that there are going to be some opportunities going forward with the, with the development of the museum and I'd like to be involved in some of the planning process for that and bring some of my experience to that process.
Only here nine months and you're already, you know, standing up and, and willing to serve the community says a ton about you and it, people like you are what make Lacey a home and not just a place to live. So I, you know, I'd strongly believe that and, and you're a great example for other people to follow.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor.
There's a motion.
Just fascinating to me about our history department, which is amazing, is, is it just forces me to think back that there were people just like us, just as passionate and hard working for their community as we are, that, you know, it's our duty to go back and learn from and recognize and appreciate, even though they had no, very little thought of, of us doing that. It's very, it's surreal.
Well, you know, we're all making history every day. It's, it's a renewable resource in that sense, so.
Thank you. It's been moving second to appoint David Black to the historic commission. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Seriously, like the most qualified person I've ever met. So, next up is standing in general committees. First up is the finance and economic development committee. We met on the twenty-seventh and had several agenda items. First up was our two thousand nineteen budget amendment ordinance. This is usually done, you know, a couple times a year, where usually the budget has been mended once per year prior to the development of next year's proposed budget. So here are some of the following significant budget amendments that have been identified since the adoption of the two thousand nineteen budget. The Lacey Veterans Services Amendment, so this is two point five million dollars with a five hundred thousand dollars necessary to complete the lease tenant improvements for the Veterans Affairs Outstation Center. This, the state capital budget includes two million dollars for Lacey Veterans Services hub enhancement request. The city will initially need to incur the cost of improvements, but all this will be reimbursed. To the police department was four hundred fifty thousand dollars for police department salaries and benefits. We need a new billing permit system. The train depot trail amendy, that was in, in reserves and so the rest of the reserves will be released. The Great Cuyahoga Park for development, the master plan, addition for lot due to higher than expected lot treatment sales and the storm wire operating fund. We added a, a new sweeper and so we're, we need to make that amendment. The next up was the two thousand nineteen mid-year financial report. So although all mid-year expenditure categories show variances from the previous year, some of the most significant variance included, the, about two hundred ninety-two thousand for the police department. The street funds, first half two thousand nineteen expenditures increased two hundred and, almost two hundred ninety thousand. The capital equipment fund experienced over four hundred thousand dollars increase primarily due to the city's economic development investment of a hundred ninety-five thousand Lacey Makerspace. The mid-year general fund revenues increased over a million dollars compared to the previous year and sales tax generated from the construction is really the most significant reason for the increase. The early twenty twenty budget revenue projections indicate strength similar to the adopted two thousand nineteen budget. Next up was our two thousand nineteen mid-year investment report. The city's adopted investment policy requires quarterly reports to the city manager and then annual reports to the city council, but back in February, we asked to review this quarterly, the quarterly reports biannually, so twice a year. And Lacey's core fund portfolio continues to perform well compared to the investment strategy benchmarks and we got really lucky in some cases because where interest rates went. And so we had some smart analysis that happened there and we were able to, to look at that portfolio and, and make some great choices for the city. Then last up was our House Bill fourteen oh six resolution, which we just approved the resolution today. And that is my report. Yep.
So I just looked up the legislation real quick. It is fixed on the twenty nineteen taxable year, so to answer your question, it's not going to increase. So I appreciate the generation of the state, but they're also probably looking at the future and they want to make sure they capture future growth, so.
So not as, not, not.
Still generous.
It's still generous, still generous, but.
Two thousand sixteen was a good year though.
Nineteen. Twenty nineteen.
But in, in the same regards, in the next recession, when, if revenues were to go down, it also doesn't go down.
Good point.
So it is steady in both directions.
That's, that's fair enough.
And it's still not an additional tax, it's just redistributing money already going to the state, back to local, which is a no-brainer.
Absolutely. So next up is the general government and public safety committee.
So we met August twenty-seventh also. There was one agenda item was the public records activity update in twenty eighteen, filling all the requests. It costs the agency just below three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars at an average cost per request just above a hundred and twenty. And the total tract expense recovery was three hundred and twenty-eight. For the requests received through January first through July thirty-first, twenty nineteen, there was a total of fourteen hundred seventy-eight requests with one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven for police and a hundred and ninety-one for the city. And the average number of days to close requests were two days for police and ten days for the city. And the city staff provided the estimate of staff time for the top three requests by volume with a range between twelve and forty hours, as well as a quarterly breakdown by department with staff hours of three hundred and twenty-seven staff hours for first quarter and three hundred and seven for the second quarter in twenty nineteen. City staff will provide an update to the committee in August twenty twenty following submission of the twenty nineteen J-Lock report. And that's my report.
Thank you. Next up is board commissions and committee reports. I'm up first. The mayor's forum met last Friday right here at city hall. Unfortunately, we had several mayors who couldn't make it, but the mayor of Tenino, Becota, Olympia and myself were here. We, we just updated each other on, on issues that are happening in our communities and Mayor Becota gave us sort of a preview of their upcoming Halloween celebrations and Boo Coda. And so their, that, that event continues to be grow and grow every year and I'm really excited for all the things that they have coming up this year. And so he just sort of spent a lot of time going over several of the changes that are going to be happening. And a lot, a lot of the recognition they have received for their haunted house and, and that time, so it'll be another great event this year and I look forward to attending it. Next up is the transportation policy board and we met this yesterday and we actually had an all-day retreat. And we had a moderator come in and, and help us. I've been helping plan this retreat with staff and the vice chair of the transportation policy board, Graham Sakerson, for the last couple months. And what's so important about this retreat is we're starting to look at how federally funds are allocated in Thurston County, when their federally, transportation funds are allocated in Thurston County. And what we're trying to do is take a look at that and see if we can make that, those policy decisions be based on a little bit different criteria that maybe make it a little more competitive, but also takes into account the, the region's priorities. And the biggest difference is really for, since late nineties, what we've basically done at the transportation policy board when we allocate these funds is we sort of look at lane miles for each jurisdiction and say, well, based on how much funds we receive. at lane miles for each jurisdiction and say, well, based on how much funds we're receiving and the sort of lane miles within each jurisdiction, if we were going to look at that alone, each jurisdiction would receive sort of X amount of dollars out of the funds available. And then, we sort of, before we have the request for proposal, we basically send out and said, you know, we're not saying you're limited to these, this number, but sort of, this was what would be sort of fair if you, if you proposed a project, if it was in this sort of number, you know, this budget. The Department, the Washington DOT and the federal government, more and more are looking at sort of having some sort more of a performance measure, as not being sort of that, not allocating with, with a formula like that. Now, there's a lot of decisions that go into place when we're, we're making decisions about projects, and we haven't always necessarily gone off of exactly those numbers, but we've, we've always kept it in mind. So, what we're sort of proposing is, is to look at that and see if, if there's some way we can improve it. Now, this is very early on in the process. You know, one of the, the suggestions that have come out of it, and something I've been talking for a while about, is that our Technical Advisory Committee, which is really made up of the staff of, of all of our jurisdictions, they're the experts when it comes to this. And yet, there's not a law communication that happens between the Technical Advisory Committee and the Policy Board. And so, one suggestion that we talked about is, well, before we'd have a request for proposals, maybe we should be working with them a little bit more to sort of get a better idea of the needs of each of the jurisdictions and keep that in mind before we do a request for proposal. And so, I'm really looking forward to working with TAC a little bit more as we sort of develop a new policy when it comes to these federal funds. And so, we spent all day sort of looking at where we've, where we've been and, and giving some ideas of, of what our priorities might be if, in developing the new policy. So, this is not something that's going to happen overnight. There's going to be a lot of work that needs to go into this. We gave a lot of direction to our staff on next steps. I think it was an exceptional retreat. Actually, I was very pleased of how well it went. I've been to a lot of these retreats over the years, and I think this was a very successful retreat. And so, there's a lot of work still to be done, and I look forward to doing that work. In the middle of that, we did have a quick business meeting where we passed a recommendation of our six-year RTIP on to full council, to Thurston Regional Planning Council. And so, we did that, make that, made that recommendation, and we went back into the retreat. So, that is my report. Next up is Deputy Mayor.
So, the Joint Animal Services Commission won't meet until the 25th. Lot Clean Water Alliance met in the evening of September 11th yesterday, and as, again, we have a work session and then a business meeting. At our work session, we discussed how hauled waste from commercial waste haulers have caused spikes in the digesters due to septic tank effluents, which may have concentrated high levels of debris, suspended solids, ammonia, and other pollutants, and making it difficult to, to be compliant with our permits, so that was a concern. Lot had a moratorium that went into effect March 2019 for private haulers. The question is whether or not to continue the moratorium, that is, make it permanent, or lift the moratorium this year and notify them that there will be a permanent moratorium in place the following year. And the funny thing, well, it's not funny, Lot always points out that Lacey with our step system is now on this schedule so that we don't cause spikes. Olympia also is on a calendar also so that they don't cause spikes, but they never mention Olympia, they always say Lacey, weirdly. But, in order to make sure that Lot, make sure that jurisdictions are able to handle their step systems, if the, the commercial haulers are not really under any requirement to take it through Lot, and so, there's other places they could go to take, to remove their waste and pump it, so, including Tacoma, which is a lot bigger than Lot. And we'll talk about that more later. I think we'll probably go ahead and, and allow them the moratorium, not take off the moratorium this year, but making sure they know that it will be permanently put back on so they have to use some other wastewater treatment plants. Other items discussed were the Puget Sound Nutrient Source Reduction Project, Bud Inlet Capital Lake Total Maximum Daily Loads with Ecology, and apparently their model is not quite correct, so they're revisiting and recalibrating their model. Sea level rise planning and signing onto a new inter-local agreement, and an update about the gelatinous goo that was showing up in the treatment process. When you look down into the thing, there was this really yucky stuff. And the lot, the Lot lab actually identified it as a fungus from the parasitic acid, which changed to acidic acid that reacted with the waste. And so, they, because it was identified, they have now been able to correct it. And our board meeting consisted of the following. We took action approving the authorization of the Lot Board to commit to a shared funding proposal to support Phase Two work of the Funding and Governance Work Group and to sign a letter of support to encourage the state legislature to provide full funding for Phase Two of the Capital Lake Estuary, the Schutz Estuary EIS process. And Phase Two is basically the development of an implementation plan for whatever the preferred alternative will be. And the assumption is the cost will be around $50,000 for Lot. And then, we also authorized the Executive Director to execute a Public Works Trust Fund loan agreement with the Washington State Public Works Board for the Biological Process Improvement Project, and the whole project will cost 20.4 to 27.2 million, but the Public Work Trust Fund will fund about 10 million of that. And we're expected to get other funding from Ecology State Revolving Fund and our wastewater service charges and capacity development charges, which we already collect. We also had an update of Lot's education program and was introduced to new program staff, and then also had a summary of the 2018-2019 school year programs and visitors to the WET Center. And we also had a capital projects update, including the digester four interim repairs, digester refurbishment, and the ultraviolet disinfection upgrades. And that's for Lot. The Olympic Region Clean Air Agency also met yesterday, but only in the morning, so September 11th. The Board passed the annual change to Rule 1.11, which is the Federal Regulation Reference Date Change, and this has to occur every year to be consistent with EPA. We had a presentation by the Evergreen State College students working on the Community Toxic's Monitoring Program with Dr. Hadley from Orca, and this project assesses hazardous air pollutants, or HAPS, emitted by wood burning in Western Washington. And while I report out on air quality due to particulate matter, this study actually takes the hazardous chemicals found in the particulate matter and looks at ability to detect and monitor these components that are associated with wood smoke. And the study's special interest is improving a role in detection of acrylene, which is a respiratory irritant, dangerous to sensitive populations, difficult, and it's difficult to be accurately detected using current methods. But, the interesting part is the samples are being collected at our Lacey site in Mountain View Elementary School, and because that's where Thurston County is monitored. And the, the information will be used in Western Washington air toxic data to compare analyses during smoke events. And then, the more complex samples will be processed in Eastern Washington by the Eastern Research Group, and those include semi-volatile organic compounds, volatile organic compounds and carbonals. And then, the acrylene samples will be processed, processed at Evergreen. And then, Dr. Hadley also presented the July and August air quality summary for the particulate matter 2.5 microns. In July, despite the UPS failing, which kind of caused the whole power to go out for five days, Lacey showed good air quality, and in August, we also had good air quality all month. And our ozone levels for both July and August were pretty much within the normal range. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I just wanted to point out, so, the Deputy Mayor mentioned, like, partnerships with, like, scheduling and stuff, and, and there's countless examples really with our partners in the region of us combining efforts, whether it's, you know, on purpose or by circumstance to have a greater impact, whatever the issue is, and avoiding exploitations or deficiencies in policies and procedures, or shortcomings of whatever are us or Tumwater or Olympia. So, you know, it's very important, and, and we sometimes forget about these partnerships being leveraged and all the good things we do combined to make a, a better impact positively, positively on our community. And so, I think it's very important that we're reminded that happens every day, even though you don't realize it.
Staff's doing it all the time.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks, thanks for that. Next up, Councilmember Cox.
All righty. Well, thank you, Councilmember Stedman, for those good words. Regional Housing Council will meet again on September 19th, right before our next council meeting. The Health and Human Services Council met on Monday, the 9th. Much of the meeting focused on a presentation by Thurston County Homeless Coordinator Keely Marino about the county's five-year homeless response plan. And this plan provides strategies for goals set by the State Department of Commerce. There's five of the ones that are being addressed here. One is to identify and engage all people experiencing homelessness through outreach and coordination with all organizations involved with the homeless crisis response, to prioritize housing for people with the greatest need, three, to operate an effective and efficient homeless crisis response system that swiftly moves people into stable, permanent housing, four, project the impact of the fully implemented local plan on the number of households housed and the number of, of people left unsheltered, and finally, five, is to address racial disparities among people experiencing homelessness. We also had $13,417 that the Community Action Council is returning to us because it is withdrawing from the Women, Infants, and Children's Program. There's just been some difficulties and issues there. So, we wanted to award that money out. It seemed to make sense to just give it to two who had been among the groups that were funded earlier this year, but did not get as much as they had requested. So, we agreed to award $3,400 to the Rochester Organization of Families, otherwise known as ROOF, for emergency needs, and $10,017 to Senior Services of South Sound for their Meals on Wheels program. Intercity Transit did not meet. The next meeting is September 18th, and that will be a joint meeting of the Transit Authority and the Community Advisory Group. The Thurston Regional Planning Council met on September 6th. We received a number of presentations. The mayor's already talked about the 2020-2023 Regional Transportation Improvement Program. Paul Brewster, a senior planner, gave us an overview of the Regional Trails Plan Update. He talked about the history of the bicycle and trail planning in the region. We talked about the progress that's been made toward implementing the existing Regional Trails Plan, which was adopted in 2007, and we discussed the proposed scope of work for the Trails Plan Update. They hope to have this process take two years and conclude next year. We also received a demonstration of the updated agency Here2There website, which is www.thurstonhear2there.org. And the website is aimed to make, to be more accessible, usable, and broaden the focus, so it serves more of the region's residents and travelers. So, take a look. It is a lot easier to navigate than the other site. And then, finally, we received an update on the Port of Olympia's Vision 2050 work. We received an overview from Karen Parkhurst, who's the Planning and Program Director, and she assisted the port with outreach for this plan, including doing interviews, organizing focus groups, doing online surveys, contests, presentations, and intercept surveys at community events. And the community, community was asked to share their ideas to help shape the way the port looks, feels, and functions into the future. And if you're interested in that, you can go online to the website, it's generally the Port of Olympia website, but add the extension of 2050 to that. And then, finally, I wanted to let you guys know that I've been, joined the Thurston Thrives Executive Committee, and went to my first meeting, I guess it was last week. And then, Thurston Thrives Coordinating Council meeting for September is canceled, so the next meeting will be October 21st, and that's my report.
Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Grayson.
Thank you. So, Emergency Medical Services will actually meet next week, and Thurston County Law and Justice will meet, will not meet again until October, but I do have a report from Thurston 911 Communications. We had a relatively short meeting, those tend to be long, this one was actually pretty quick. We had a presentation from Doug Maugh, former mayor of Olympia, and Jim Quackenbush, former director of TCOM, on the, on where Say Yes to 911 Committee is. They gave a presentation on the work that they're doing to help pass the Prop 1 that'll be on the ballot in November. In addition, we had some discussion about the radio replacement project and where it is currently, which is testing out several different possible providers at this point. They've applied for a grant from the Niskali Charitable Grant Application Process for $5,000 to get a training, training tracking software. There's quite a bit of required training involved for the communicators at 911, and they need a system in order to track that training for the state. We also had the completion of a work study, a workload study. What it found basically is that we're about six FTEs understaffed. So, TCOM is not planning at this point to add any additional staff, other than replacement of a couple that have left, which is, there's the next training classes in December. Believe it or not, it's very difficult work and very difficult to keep that, those positions fully staffed. This will be our third training class of the year, this December class. Very difficult to keep people. We, we have about a 12%, 12% of the people that make it through the full training don't make it through the probationary period. So, it's, it's a difficult job. Let's see, who else? And that is really about all we had, as far as that meeting goes. We did also have the first meeting of the Budget Committee this morning, which I was asked to chair. Budget for 2020 looks quite good. We had, like I said, first meeting was today. That'll be presented to the full board in, at our October meeting. We have a joint meeting of our operations and our administrative boards, where the budget will be presented and voted on. So, that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hearn.
So, the applications are in for lodging tax, and we're scheduled to meet end of the month to deliberate about those applications. And Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking is currently working on next year's community conversations and outlining that, getting ready for that. They're one of two major... They're one of two major events of the year, the other being the 5K Race Against Trafficking.
Councilmember Stedman.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Zeman.
The EDC, excuse me. The EDC resumes its regular meetings on Monday, the 23rd. The EDC, in collaboration with St. Martin's University, has a wonderful speaker series throughout the year. If you haven't heard of it, it's called Wisdom and Chocolate. I've been to a couple. It's quite lovely. Wednesday, September, September 18th at 7:00 PM in the Worthington Center on SMU's campus is the next one, and it's titled Innovation in Healthcare. The speaker is Melanie Matthews, who's the CEO of Physicians of Southwest Washington. So, the speakers change all the time. It's really a wonderful asset to the community to hear about new things. And that's my report.
Thank you. We've reached the end of our agenda. I will be adjourning to a work session where we'll talk about our Regional Housing Council recommendations. But until next time, as always, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.